Okay, welcome to Thursday, January 3rd, 2019, for South County Board of Commissioners Meeting. First bill of order we do is call the meeting to order, and it is now 5:01 PM. And the next is going to be Colonel Brown, Commissioner Brown, Dr. Brown's going to do the pledge and the invocation for it.
Please stand as you're able. Bow your heads. Gracious heavenly Father, we come here tonight to do the people's business. As we usher into this new year, help us to have the wisdom, guidance, and knowledge that we need to do an outstanding job for the people. Lord, provide leadership, be with the new board leadership as they're installed tonight. Help, give them the wisdom and the guidance that only you can provide to help us to do the right thing. Keep us humble so that we do everything for your glory. Help us do the right things for the right reason. As it says in 2 Chronicles 7:14, "If my people which are called by my name shall humble themselves in prayer and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and will forgive their sin and will heal their land." We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Under adoption of the agenda, commissioners, are there any changes?
I do have one, Mr. Chairman. I would like to public hearing number one, I would like to postpone that for 30 days or the first work session in February, excuse me, the first public meeting in February, which is February the 7th.
We have a postponement for public hearing number one to February 7th. We have a motion and second, please vote.
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
And that passes 5 to 0. Yes, sir.
I'd like to postpone public hearing 5, St. Jala Sales LLC AZ 180029 until December, oh, I'm sorry, February 7th, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and second for public hearing number 5 to postpone to February 7th, please vote. And that passes 5 to 0. Motion number 1. Anybody else have anything else? If not, I do. I want to make a motion to postpone all the annual committee appointments and reappointments listed on the agenda. You'll find it under as Water and Sewer Committees, Park and Recreation Committee, Finance Committee, Transportation Committee, to the January 8th, 2018 work session.
Second.
We have a motion and second, please vote. That passes 5 to 0. Let's update my schedule real quick. Anybody else? Okay, if not, I think staff, you have one, Eric?
Yes, sir, I'd like to, as New Business 7B add appointment of District 1 member to the Public Facilities Authority, it's a four-year term that begins January 1 of 2019.
I move.
We have a motion and a second. For New Business?
7B.
You said 7B, is that what we got?
7B as in boy.
Okay. Please vote. And that passes 5 to 0. I'll give you a second to update your calendars. Anything else, counselor?
Mr. Chairman, nothing for me, thank you.
Anybody else? If not, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
I move.
Please vote. And it's adopted, the 5 to 0 vote. Adoption of the rules and procedures for 2019, is there a motion from the board?
Actually, prior to making a motion, I have a question for counsel, just to clarify. We discussed this before, that there was a potential within a newly seated board that we may want to have a little bit more time to look at the rules, and whether or not we should either adopt them and amend them at a later time, which is a fairly simple procedure, or whether we should just, in knowledge of that, go ahead and postpone. I'm looking for a recommendation.
That's right, Commissioner. The rules, the typical protocol, that the rules governing the internal procedure of the Board of Commissioners are adopted at the first meeting, but the way the rules read right now is that these rules may be amended by a simple majority vote of the entire commissioner, commission at a regular meeting or special meeting. So, the point is, if you adopt this this evening and still want to further modify them throughout the year, that is certainly appropriate and can be done with a simple majority.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, so...
I make a motion, we adopt the rules as they are.
Hold on a second. We have a motion and a second to adopt the rules as they are, please vote. That passes 5 to 0. Election of the officers is next on the agenda tonight. I think Commissioner Mills wanted to make a motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint or we nominate Vice Chair, now, Samson, to be our chair, but...
May I second that?
Yes, and I'd like to thank Chairman Levent for his past two years of service to our board. I know it's a hard job to do, it requires a lot of effort, a lot of work, a lot of meetings, a lot of extra time has to go into it, and I know that I speak for everybody on the board, that we appreciate the effort and the job that you've put into it, and it doesn't mean that your job's over, it's just a new beginning, or a new, you know, a different role to play, but it's, I've been on the board now six years, and I haven't been chair, but it's a, it takes everybody working together, and I hope that we'll have a very united board and be able to offer Commissioner Chair Samson, but be able to offer her all the support that we can in working together and be united and support our staff all that we can in having a united board.
Wonderful, thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. And it does, it takes a lot of extra time and effort, but it sure was an honor, and now I get a little more free time to find time for me and my family, it's going to be wonderful, actually, just to let y'all know that.
Well, and I appreciate too, that the different, Lord knows, we've been at each other's throat many times, but...
No way.
But we have, the things that we have worked on together, we've done some really incredible things, I think, for the county, and all of us have our different strengths and weaknesses, and that's what helps make a board effective.
And I would, I would second that, because I'll tell you, each one of us has strengths and weaknesses, and our strengths all together and our knowledge all together makes us pretty powerful and pretty smart.
Yep, and I look forward to seeing what Chairman Samson can do.
Yep, alright, thank you.
With our help.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order, very quickly, and that is, the motion Commissioner Mills was to appoint, not nominate, just for the record, thank you all very much.
To appoint, well, I just read where it said nomination.
Well, and I appreciate just one, thank you.
Yes.
The cheat sheet does say nomination, so...
It says nomination on our cheat sheet, so...
And that we got, used to get tangled up in that, it's just an appointment, thank you.
Okay, appoint Laura Samson.
You're good?
I'm good.
My second for the same, please vote. And that passes 5 to 0, congratulations, Commissioner Samson, you are now the chair.
Well, thank you. And just, I want to say thank you again, Todd, thanks for having, you know, driven the ship for the last two years, and I, you know, hopefully can keep us headed in the right direction. I'm looking forward to working on a different level with everyone here and hoping, you know, we can continue to work together, to refine how we work as a team, that we are definitely, the whole is greater than the sum of the parts, and we definitely have a lot of work to do here, and I think with clear and open communication cooperation across the board, we can do great things for the county, and I appreciate you having that confidence in me, so, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, hang on a second. It's yours.
Thank you. Board, do we have any appointments for, would anyone like to make an appointment to the Vice Chair position? And if I don't hear any, I would like to make one myself.
Please.
I would like to appoint Commissioner Mills as the Vice Chair. I think that we can...
And I'll do a second.
Thank you. I think that we can demonstrate a new era of cooperation in this board, and that we all recognize our strengths and our passion for this job, and I look forward to working with that, channeling that, working together, so, thanks.
You have to call another one now.
Yes, I'd like to call for a motion, I'll call for a vote now, a motion and a second, please vote.
There you go.
And that does pass, and welcome to the Vice Chair, Cindy.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion that we nominate or appoint, appoint our newest Commissioner, Molly Cooper, as Secretary.
Second.
It's not a lot of work, I promise you.
No, actually, with being you, I think that possibly...
You wanted to decline, okay, fair enough. Will you withdraw your second?
I withdraw.
The opera?
I think that Dennis Brown, I would like to appoint Dennis Brown as Secretary.
Let me withdraw my motion, there you go, and I'll make a second for that. Please vote. Ms. Cooper, if you'll vote.
Oh.
Now, Dennis has to bring us flowers and stuff.
She's all out on that one.
What's that? We're all good.
Thank you. So, we have, moving along to number six, the annual appointments, we did postpone that action until after we've had a chance to gather together, which takes us up to our first set of public comments. At this time, Karen will read the rules of the meeting and announce the public comment speakers.
They could have announcements and reports.
Oh, did we skip over that?
Yeah.
I must have, excuse me, see how brain I am? Oh, yes. Thank you. I did, I did miss a page, you are correct, thank you. Moving on to, excuse me, announcements and reports, we have a presentation of Law Enforcement Commendation Medal Award to DFC John Crane by the Robert Forsyth Chapter of the Georgia Society of Sons of the American Revolution. You guys would like to come forward with your presentation?
I'm Ed Regal, I'm Chairman of the Medals and Awards Committee for the Robert Forsyth Chapter, Sons of the American Revolution. I'm joined today by members and officers of the chapter. The SAR Law Enforcement Commendation Medal is presented to those who have served with distinction and devotion in the field of law enforcement. The medal is intended to recognize exceptional service or accomplishment in the field of law enforcement. For the past five years, we've recognized officers of the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. This year's recipient is Deputy First Class John Crane. Deputy First Class Crane is a leader of the Court Security Section and was nominated because he is passionate about the safety and security of everyone within that group. He has demonstrated this by volunteering to attend and help plan building safety meetings, and he serves as a liaison to the citizens working in the different offices in the buildings. He is, he always has a positive attitude and is willing to help with any project or extra duty that comes up. He has assisted his supervisors in reviewing and suggesting updates and changes in the emergency response section of the court security plan. When the call for volunteers from the deputies who work in the courtroom went out, he was the first to step forward. He regularly mentors the newer deputies, not because it's his responsibility, but because he wants to help everyone on the team learn and improve. He immediately takes action to better the situation when he sees things that need to be done or changed. His supervisors cited him as a self-starter in all aspects of his job and commended his willingness to help out wherever he is needed, often stepping up and taking on other duties without complaint and doing so in an efficient manner while showing respect to everyone. For his outstanding service as a member of the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, the Robert Forsyth Chapter is proud to present the SAR Law Enforcement Commendation Medal to Deputy First Class John Crane.
Do you want to get a picture with them as well?
Would you guys like to get together for a picture up here?
Somebody up there might be better here.
There's so many up there, we're going to squeeze up behind you since there's such a big group.
Yeah, that's probably best.
And y'all have such big hats.
You want to get up here? I'll leave you to that.
One more, hold on, please.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Thank you so much, congratulations, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have one.
I was going to say, Commissioners, would, does anyone else have an announcement? I believe Chairman, former Chairman Levent would like to make it.
So, I went out and ordered and got a nice plaque in hopes that you were nominated, and that didn't go to waste my money, I bought and had it printed out, so I would like to present you the plaque, if we can all sit down and get a picture. And for y'all's knowledge, this is the first female Forsyth County Chairman, this is Laura Samson, so, this one.
There we go. Thank you.
It's all me, face. Does anyone else have an announcement before we move on?
Welcome to Molly.
Yes, absolutely. Welcome, Molly. I guess it merits mentioning also that this is also the first female majority board, for what that's worth, so...
I would suggest...
The pressure's on, right? We recognize it.
You may want to, on the way home, Ms. Commissioner Cooper, you may want to get a bottle of Tums and some aspirin, it helps a little bit.
I have some Vodka as my package.
Wonderful, smart man, smart man.
Did it come with Tita?
He is a doctor.
Are there any other announcements? Seeing none, we will move on to where I was headed before. At this time, Karen will read the rules of the meeting, and we will, and will announce the public comment speakers for our first session.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the board. We'd like to take a moment to review the meeting procedures. We ask that you please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. Those who would like to speak during public comments must complete a public comment form available just outside of this room. Information regarding specific requirements to address the board is listed at the podium, please state this information prior to speaking. All comments should be directed to the entire board and not to a particular commissioner. There are two public comment opportunities during this meeting for speakers to make a verbal presentation to the board, one now and one prior to old business. The number of speakers is limited to 10 now and 10 at the second portion. Speakers are selected on a first-come basis and will be heard in the order in which they signed up, with the exception that Forsyth County residents will be heard first, with non-county residents to follow until the allotted time has expired. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. There are no speakers signed up for this first public comment section. If anyone wishes to address the board during this time, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I am Kirk Winterstein. I live in Forsyth County, I only speak for myself, and of course, I welcome our new Commissioner. Thank you for serving. I have always been thankful for all who are willing to serve as County Commissioner and Planning Commissioner. My second item is I have a request. I request that the Board of County Commissioners, the Board of Planning Commissioners, the Director of Planning and Community Development, and the Deputy Director of Planning and Community Development give full consideration to the proposals being put forth by Smart Growth Forsyth County concerning our management of trees and tree canopy, stormwater runoff, and mass grading. We know that trees protect our environment, and certainly from this last year, we know that when it rains, our streams run orange, and we also know that mass grading destroys our topsoil. Please give full consideration to the proposals being put forth by Smart Growth Forsyth County. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Winterstein.
I see no others, Commissioner.
Thank you. Moving on now to item number nine, adoption of the minutes. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting, public hearings, and executive sessions of December 20th, 2018?
I move.
A motion and second, please vote. And that passes 5 to 0. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of the special called meeting and executive session of December 27th?
I move.
A motion and second, please vote. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move.
A motion and second, please vote. We have, moving on to our, moving on to our public hearings, number one has been postponed to February the 7th, so it takes us to number two. Tom Brown, if you'd like to apprise us of that particular item.
Yes, public hearing number two, application AZ 180026, this is located in Commission District Number 5. It's a public hearing for Build Your Own Pools of Georgia LLC regarding the amendment of condition number seven placed on zoning application 2147.
Go for the public hearing.
Okay, so, there, that's our presentation. Do I have a motion to open the public hearings?
I move.
Second. Please vote. Is anyone here, here to speak in favor of this application, either the owner or the builder? If you could state your name and your relationship, whether it's your pool or you're the builder.
Wendy Schneider, I'm owner of Build Your Own Pool of Georgia, here on behalf of the owner who is here also.
And would she like to come up as well, or?
No.
No, okay. If you'll just hold on for one second, is there anyone else who, here who would be speaking in favor of this application? I don't see any, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? And I don't see any of those either, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Okay, so, do you have all of your, this is actually my district, so I'm going to go ahead and move on with this one. Do you have your letters from your adjacent neighbors that, that indicate their support or lack of support?
Yes, we've received seven out of the 11 back even with the holiday, and they're all in approval.
Okay, and the four that are remaining just did not respond?
Out of town.
Okay, okay.
We got this right before the holiday.
Of those, of those, are any of the missing parties adjacent property owners, or are they just...
No.
Okay, and you guys have dealt, obviously, with your HOA to make sure that, that this is in compliance with their regulations as well?
Yes, it's in compliance, they initially approved it, and then when they saw that we needed a variance, they needed your approval to reapprove it.
Okay, well, with that in, in mind then, I would like to make a motion to approve the ZA 2147 for the purpose of building a pool. Excuse me, I'm sorry, it's the, it's the AZ, that's the original zoning. This is, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning amendment number 180026 for parcel 203089.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and second, please vote. And that motion passes 5 to 0. Do we turn in our public participation? Yes, if you haven't already, please do. Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Moving on to number three, which is also in my district.
AZ 180027, again in Commission District Number 5, this is a public hearing for Fay Culbert Aqua Design Pools and Spas LLC regarding the amendment of condition number seven placed on zoning application 2147.
Getting their pools done, what's going on? Okay, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I move.
A motion and second, please vote. Is anyone here, obviously, you're here to speak in favor, are you the applicant or the builder?
My name is Fay Culbert, I'm Aqua Design Pools and Spas, I'm also here with the homeowner, Jeff Heath.
Okay, do you want to come up, or?
He's right here.
You don't need to, okay, you can answer all the questions.
This is me.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? I see none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
A motion and second, please vote. Okay, do you have all of the, the letters from your adjoining property owners, your neighbors as well, or?
We've received five out of the 15 that we had sent out because of the holidays. We are missing one from the neighbor to the right, if you're looking at the house neighbor to the right, lot 747, he is and has been out of town for the week of the, the holidays. We did receive the, both the neighbors to the left and to the rear of the property.
Okay, and you have also worked with your HOA?
Yes, we're in the process of that.
As far as getting, obtaining their approval for that as well? You know, I really, when there's an adjacent property involved and it is a variance on those lot lines, I do like to have them weigh in.
Okay.
So, I would, I think I'd like to go ahead and, and see if you can't get that letter?
Okay.
And get a, and I will postpone the decision on this.
Could we do a conditional approval for it?
I really can't, can, there's not any, there's not, once it's permitted, it's permitted, there's not a conditional, there's not really a check and balance that comes later on that would pick that up, so, I'd like to postpone the decision. Do you think you would have that in the next week or so, or next two weeks?
I do believe so, Jeff, tomorrow, we can have it tomorrow.
Because, if you can get it tomorrow, if you can get it to me tomorrow, actually, I'll, I'll put it to our work session.
Okay.
And it's, it'll be a procedural thing at that point, we'll just postpone the vote then.
Okay.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone the decision only on this to our very next work session, which puts us on the 8th of January.
January 8th, okay.
Second.
Thank you, a motion and second, please vote. And that passes 5 to 0. Just get with that, they can give you my card, my email, if you want to bring it in or email it to me.
Will do, thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
Number four, Tom Brown again, District 1.
AZ 180028, located in Commission District Number 1, it's a public hearing regarding the amendment of conditions number one and two placed on zoning application 3368.
That's your full presentation, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move.
A motion and second, please vote. That public hearing is open, anyone here to speak in favor, obviously Josh, your client here as well?
She, he is.
He is, okay.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, first of all, my name is Josh Scoggins with Miles Hensford in Talon, I'm here on behalf of Meredith Holmes. I'd like to first thank you for initiating this application. As the county, really what we're here for, for lack of a better phrase, is a small cleanup item for West Haven subdivision, which is located in West Forsyth at the intersection of Shambly Gap Road and Highway 20. You can see there, outlined in blue, this is a subdivision that was originally rezoned in 2007, and it has been partially developed, I believe actually, two-thirds developed. And the issue we're facing is that this property, or has zoning conditions on it, that specifically reference who is providing water and sewer service, but it's referencing the wrong entity. The conditions state that Forsyth County is basically responsible when the development is actually already tied into the City of Cummings sewer system and water system, the city has a pump station on the property, all that infrastructure is already in, so, before recording or approving the final plat for Phase 3, even though we already have the first two phases recorded and built, the staff asked us to clean up these two zoning conditions, one and two, so we would request, number one, that we insert the red language and delete the strike through, just as Mr. Brown displayed it to begin with, and all we're doing, again, is changing Forsyth County to City of Cummings. And then, number two, taking Condition 2 and removing all references to Forsyth County and basically stating that we'll comply with all City of Cummings water and sewer requirements. Again, this... And the issue we're facing is that this property, or has zoning conditions on it, that specifically reference who is providing water and sewer service, but it's referencing the wrong entity. The conditions state that Forsyth County is basically responsible when the development is actually already tied into the City of Cummings sewer system and water system. The city has a pump station on the property, all that infrastructure is already in. So before recording or approving the final plat for Phase Three, even though we already have the first two phases recorded and built, the staff asked us to clean up these two zoning conditions, one and two. So we would request, number one, that we insert the red language and delete the strike through, just as Mr. Brown displayed it to begin with. And all we're doing, again, is changing Forsyth County to City of Cummings. And then number two, taking condition two and removing all references to Forsyth County and basically stating that we'll comply with all City of Cummings water and sewer requirements. Again, this is a cleanup matter, and thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone that'd like to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, please vote. And the public hearing is closed with a vote of five to zero. Molly, this is in your district.
It is. And I don't really have anything to add on it. Like I said, I'm new on this, so this one is new for me. But with this, it's just a matter of changing the language and a little bit of housekeeping. So I, I move that we vote on this. I have to make a motion.
In favor of it?
In favor of it.
A second. I have a motion, a second, please vote. And that motion passes five to zero. Public hearing number five has been postponed until February the 7th.
For, for purposes of, of just advising the board, when it's a zoning condition amendment and the conditions are displayed, I think the AZ number captures the, the amendment as displayed.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing number six, Tom Brown.
SB 180001, the applicants, the county commissioners, it is located in Commission District Number Two. It's a public hearing for a county-initiated sketch plat approval to build an office warehouse building, office warehouse buildings on 51.47 acres of property that's currently zoned M1. The property is located north of Shiloh Road.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move.
Second.
Please vote. And the public hearing is open with a vote of five to zero. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this? Give us your name and your relationship.
Blake Dexter with Dexter Companies, we're the developer of the project. So it's a 51-acre parcel, we're asking for the approval of the sketch plat as submitted to the planning department. It'll be three buildings consisting of about 404,000 total square feet.
Is there a presentation? Is there any type of a visual site plan? Nothing?
We have a board we can put up.
It's in the book.
I just meant for the screen for...
She can put it up for the cameras.
Yeah. So everybody can see what we're, what we're discussing. Thank you.
So, it's still a public hearing.
Yeah, is there, is there anyone else that would like to speak in, do you have further comments on that, or is there anyone else from your?
Not unless you have questions.
Your group that would like to, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Robert, looks like he's gonna jump out of his seat. Come on.
The chamber needs to come up and make sure that Miles will come up. Tell us all about it.
Thank you, Chairman Simonson and the Commissioners. I'm delighted to speak on behalf of supporting this project. My name is Robert Long, I live at 69, 6990 Shady Oak Lane in Cummings in North Forsyth. Work for the, as Vice President of the Chamber of Commerce for Recount and Development. This is a project I've worked on for almost three years with Dexter Companies. They have, had targeted us many years ago for potential locations, have looked at multiple sites. They have landed on this site here, which I think is a great fit for the kind of product they're looking to develop, which is industrial flex, but a little bit of a higher nature that I think typically attracts about a, you know, 25 to 30% of their clientele is actually office users. So, you know, we're at the Chamber, as we talked before, you know, for us to be successful, we have to have, you know, sites and buildings for folks to locate in. So this is something that we desperately need with the low, overall low vacancy rate we have in Forsyth County. So we are very supportive of moving, supporting this project and moving forward with the sketch plat.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor?
If requested, I'm Tony Muse, I'm part owner with Hayes James &amp; Associates, the civil engineering firm that prepared the drawings. If there are any questions, I'll be here, willing to answer. I'm in favor of the project, of course.
Thank you for, thank you for offering that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor, or anyone who would like to speak in opposition? I see none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, please vote. Public hearing is closed. I'm gonna kick this over to Dennis, this is District Two.
Yes, thank you.
Do you have any questions, or?
Thank you. So this is a really good project, these are really nice buildings, and we need them down there, it's gonna help the tax digest and everything, so just, just preserve that row of trees out the front, you've done a good job so far. We get asked about those trees a lot.
Just one more time, what is the total square footage of the entire project?
It is 404,800 feet.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the county-initiated request for the sketch plat approval to build the office warehouse buildings on 51.47 acres, currently zoned M1, SP 180001, parcel 065-035, District Two.
Second.
In accordance with the sketch plat as presented.
Agreed. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please vote.
Aye.
And then are none opposed?
Congratulations, and thank you to the county.
Five to zero, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anything long, we have public hearing number seven, Tom Brown.
So in application 3927, the applicant is the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners, this is located in Commission District Number Three. It's a public hearing for a county-initiated request to rezone three acres from O&amp;I to A1. The property is located on the south side of Pittman Road.
That's the entirety of the presentation? Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move.
Second.
A motion, a second, please vote. And the public hearing is open, with a vote of five to zero. Is there anyone who is here to speak in favor of this county-initiated application?
Fire chief?
Fire chief here. Is there anyone here who's, anyone here who would like to speak in opposition? Well, we can do that for discussion. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Second.
Please vote, and that is closed with a vote of five to zero. Chief Head, would you like to comment on this, to give us a little bit of color on this county-initiated application?
Sorry, if you speak up.
Yes, would you like to give us a little bit of background on this county-initiated application taking the O&amp;I down to an A1 on Pittman Road?
And if you don't, maybe legal wants to get into it.
Or perhaps Ken could.
This is the three acres for your next fire department over there, and I think your zoning didn't work that was on it.
Yeah, wasn't this the one where we own this property and we're simply attempting to zone it to make sure that what we're doing out there is consistent with the performance standards?
Yes, for a fire department.
Yeah, I mean, this is done, from my perspective, out of an abundance of caution, and it's simply to try and demonstrate that we're trying to live by the rules that we create for others, but the county, county property is not subject to zoning, so this is purely, I mean, just, that's just...
I would agree, I think we're sending the right message, even though we're not really required to rezone. It's consistent with what we would require of others.
I can, I agree with that.
Okay, thank you. District Three, Todd, this is in your district.
Yes, it is. So I make a motion to approve the county-initiated zoning from the three acres from O&amp;I to A1 for ZA 3927 on parcel 080-155.
Second.
Motion, a second. Sorry.
Please vote?
Yeah, I gotta get used to that, don't I?
Thank you. Public hearing number eight, and this one actually goes to you, Ken.
Madam Chair, thank you, board members. This issue this evening is a second public hearing with respect to proposed modifications to the Forsyth County Fire Safety and Prevention Ordinance. Both public hearing eight and nine are on the same subject matter, which is false alarms. We have actually two false alarm provisions in the county code, one pertaining to alarms directed at the fire department and one pertaining to false alarms directed at the sheriff's office. And we found out that there were enough inconsistencies or, or just differences where we wanted to harmonize them, and also take that as an opportunity to provide some relief and some options with respect to enforcement, particularly with respect to the issuance of warnings and citations. So that's a little bit of a primer for both eight and nine, because the end result of these two public hearings, should the Board of Commissioners approve, is that they're basically gonna be exactly the same, except with respect to the entity that is enforcing them, the fire department versus the sheriff's office. So if you look in your Exhibit A in your agenda packet, you're gonna see a lot of red ink, there's less there than meets the eye. All of that is really doing is, is harmonizing that language to match its equivalent with respect to the sheriff's office. So we're defining the language the same, making basically the code simpler and hopefully easier to wade through for citizens and stakeholders that are affected by it. With respect to about three-quarters down the page, you'll see that all false alarms to a premise within a four-hour period shall be considered a single violation. Obviously, that's in case there's technical issues with the alarm. The first two false alarms within a calendar year at any premise, there shall be no penalty, and a warning shall be provided. Written warnings for a first and second false alarm shall be hand-delivered or mailed to the responsible person. Of course, responsible person is a defined term, you can see it just a few lines above. We also allow for the posting of the warnings at the location. If you'll turn the page, though, really the nuts and bolts of this, in addition to sort of harmonizing these two codes to make sure that the fire and the sheriff's false alarm prohibitions read the same. If you turn the page, you're gonna see a sub-paragraph four, and this is something where the folks actually required to implement this came to us and wanted a little more flexibility. We talked about this a month ago when this had its first public hearing. Says this, "Prior to the issuance of any citation to any responsible person for a business violating the provisions of this ordinance, the Forsyth County Fire Department," and again, it's gonna read sheriff's office in the next section when we go to Agenda Nine, "may first send a letter via certified mail to the general manager or owner of the business requesting that the individual or his or her designee meet with the fire department for service of the citation. If the individual or his or her designee does not meet with the fire department within 10 days, the fire department may serve a responsible person with the citation to magistrate court." That's not required, but the point is, is we don't want to have to, 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 you know, have the, the chasing down of individuals, we'll give them just a letter, they can come in, and the nine times out of 10, if not more, 9.9 out of 10, they're just simply gonna pay their citation. It's not required that we do it that way, but it is an accommodation. We also want to make sure that we are not necessarily having to cite whoever we happen to find at the location, when in fact, really, it's the owner of the, of the business or the premises that we really want to get the citation in the hands of. So, Madam Chair, that's what this is doing, and this is a second public hearing. After the public hearing, you can adopt, should the board choose to.
Thank you, and I, I do recall that being kind of the, the big sticky piece was the notification piece and who exactly was being held responsible. Are we capturing that, that, that responsible party information from a business license, or how are they determining who that, is it still going to be asking for the manager or the owner on premise when they arrive at the call? Or what are they using as the source to determine that responsible party?
That's a good, that's a good question, and I think that, that maybe each enforcement department would, would, would take, you know, do that on their own, find out.
A person drew it, right?
It's defined, responsible party means with respect to a premise, any individual or entity which owns, so obviously the title records could indicate that, manages or otherwise controls such premises. It might be that when the fire department or the sheriff's office visit, the person that's there is all too happy to say, "I don't own it," and it's somebody else, and direct them that way. So I think that each enforcement agency will just have to find that out themselves.
Thank you, thank you. Is there any further discussion from the board? Anybody have any questions? No?
The only thing I have is under, on our sheets, it says staff is seeking direction from the board regarding this to how to proceed. It's just, does it need to be a public hearing today, or we need to give direction to send it to public?
I think that's probably just, on that particular one, that's probably just generic language, and they're looking for me to guide you all, so we just need a second public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. With that in mind, would anyone like to offer a motion?
No, we, we need to have the public hearing, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We had too much discussion in the front. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move.
Second.
And that motion, that public hearing is open with a motion of five to zero, with a vote of five to zero. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? I see none. Is there anyone would like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote, and the motion, the public hearing is closed with a vote of five to zero. Board, what's your pleasure?
Make the motion to approve, and Ken, can we do eight and nine at the same time, or just want to do eight separate?
Commissioner Van, we need to have a separate public hearing, so we're not quite ready for nine yet.
All right, so I make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Eight as presented in our books and described by counselor.
Second. Please vote, and that passes with a vote of five to zero. Moving on to item number nine.
Madam Chair, item number nine is a second public hearing. This is the alter ego of the ordinance that you just approved with respect to the fire department. The language is the same, except that it pertains to the sheriff's office. I will simply rely upon my prior presentation on this one. Thank you.
Okay, I think we'll just go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone, is, would I, would anyone like to make a motion to open the public hearing?
I move.
A motion, a second, please vote, and that public hearing is open with a vote of five to zero. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this? Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Second.
Please vote, and that public hearing is closed with a vote of five to zero. Discussion, I think we got a lot of discussion.
Just one, Ken, and under number nine, you have no red lines, it's just front and back page with a signature page in the back, is that all there is?
There, there should be a resolution.
That's what I have.
We may not find a pink divider, piece of paper.
Uh huh.
We may find any dividend.
Gotcha.
And hopefully that should contain some modifications.
And this is the modifications you're recommending?
That is correct. Again, it's just...
Forgive me, it's just like what we talked about in the fire, except it's now applicable to the sheriff.
Okay. Ready for a motion, Madam Chair?
Would anyone like to offer a motion on this? Is there no further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the Ordinance 82, Chapter 15 of the Code of Forsyth County, Georgia, offenses that are presented in our book, including the resolution.
Second. Please vote, and that passes with a vote of five to zero. Thank you. Number 10, Ken, you're up.
Madam Chair, number 10, board members, thank you. Number 10, 11, and 12 are all interrelated, and so we do need to take them one at a time, and I will walk you through them. But I will go ahead and tell you that this evening, I am not recommending that we adopt them this evening, I'm gonna recommend we have one more public hearing, preferably in February, because I think there's still some work to do. Item number 10 is the county's ordinance-based regulations with respect to synthetic or unregulated marijuana, which we are now modifying, presumably, to include both synthetic opiates and steroids. And so this is something that is very serious, and something that I know the Board of Commissioners is passionate about, and so, but there's still some work to do on it. I think you may recall, the last public hearing, the sheriff got up and said, "Great idea, want this to happen, want to make it work, need some more work." And we're still moving toward that end, but we're not quite to the point of being able to adopt this evening, and in fact, going ahead and getting ahead of myself, I might recommend that the board give some direction to perhaps have a couple of board members, no more than two, meet with some representatives of my office and the sheriff's office, and see if we can hammer out some language that we all like. I might recommend Commissioner Mills, you spearhead that, and perhaps, again, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but perhaps you spearhead that and have one more of your fellow colleagues attend that meeting. What this attempts to do is expand upon what we used to call our K2 or spice ordinance, What this attempts to do is expand upon what we used to call our K-2 or spice ordinance, which is our unregulated synthetic cannabinoid ordinances. These things are actually, these sorts of substances are actually worse, candidly, than traditional marijuana and THC, because a lot of the chemical compounds are simply unknown what's in them. The chemists are working diligently to figure out what's in them, and there's now not only unregulated marijuana, but there's unregulated opiates and unregulated steroid substitutes as well. So what we're doing is expanding the scope of what this ordinance is intending to capture. And then we are also making it illegal, of course. Now, with respect to unregulated steroid substitutes, we're not making it necessarily illegal, because there are varieties of that sort of chemical composition sold in stores that are legitimate stores, that sell a legitimate product. But we are also providing that you can't carry those sorts of products in locations where you also have a alcohol license or a license to sell non-traditional tobacco products or alternative nicotine products, which is vape. So we're not making that illegal, those sorts of synthetic steroidal products, but we are limiting where you can sell it. With respect to synthetic opiates and synthetic marijuana, that's just going to be illegal, based upon the draft presently. Another big key to this, and this is why I'm going to need all of it postponed, because it kind of works as a package, is we are linking infractions of this code to the strikes against you in your alcohol code, and that is probably the biggest stick this county has to bring to bear, because alcohol is, well, that's where the money is with respect to some of these vendors, and if this stuff is illegal and they are carrying it, and it can actually have an impact on the cash cow alcohol, they may choose simply not to risk it. And that's also a point.
Ken, would this be an appropriate time to discuss the difference between an ordinance that controls the sale and distribution versus possession, and this is not actually a criminal criminalization?
Right.
It's a county ordinance. I think that's probably.
It's a great time, and thank you for that. So yeah, in fact, that's why this is so difficult to write, is because counties can't create crimes. If that was the case, we might have 159 counties with 159 different penal codes, so we don't have that. The state of Georgia, the legislature can create crimes, misdemeanors and felonies. What we can do is we can base, produce ordinances, and ordinances have to yield to state laws. So opioids or marijuana is already illegal under state law, but synthetic marijuana, in many respects, is illegal under state law. But what we have found is that, as nimble as state law is, there are still chemical compositions of these substances which are not made illegal by state law, because state law can't keep up with it, but are intended to sort of fill the gap impermissibly and synthesize this same sort of psychotropic effects, and we're attempting to capture that in ordinance, not making it a misdemeanor, not making it a felony, but making it a, what's called a quasi-criminal offense, and more in the realm of a regulatory infraction. And that's what we can do, and we're attempting to be more nimble than the General Assembly can to keep up with this activity. And candidly, Board Members, it's to disincentivize it from being out and being marketed on the street, because I know that all of you believe very passionately that it's not got a place in the county. So Commissioner Samson, Chairman Samson, thank you for that. Bottom line, that's what this does. That's the objective of this, but it's not ready yet. So I would respectfully request, Madam Chair, we hold the public hearing, and then it'd be deferred till the first public hearing in February with a further request that Commissioner Mills and perhaps another one of your colleagues in the Board meet with myself and perhaps some representatives of the SO to see if we can't get this where it needs to be.
Thank you. Ken, would anyone like to make a motion to open the public hearing?
No move.
Please vote, and the public hearing is open with a vote of five to zero. Anyone who would like to speak in favor, please come forward.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I am Kirk Winterstein. I live in Forsyth County. I speak only for myself. This is what I believe. I believe that we all know we have a drug problem here, and we know that we have a United States constitutional right to protect and pursue the welfare of our county. I love going up to North Georgia. I probably know their drug problem a little bit better than I know the problem down in Forsyth County. And I go up to Fanning and Gilmer and Pickens County, and I was talking to their drug problem that they have up there. And it seems that up in those counties, the drugs come in on the weekends, and young people go to the hospital, and they die because of those drugs. And we know that by statistics, that people who use legal drugs that mimic marijuana, opioids, or steroids have a greater chance of moving on to illegal drugs. And we know that the legal substances that are being modified are, the purpose of that is to stay about two steps ahead of legislation. And so we have people in North Georgia, they're young people, they buy a product they believe is legal, and they suffer, and they are winding up in the hospital, and they are winding up requiring mental health professionals. And I was reading the newspaper up there, and we had some law enforcement officers executing a search warrant, and one of the law enforcement officers knocked over a tin of white powder, and they don't know if that's a legal substance or a illegal substance at the time, and the officer had to go to the hospital. Now, he was released, but it's getting to the point, people don't know what's legal and what is illegal. We are relatively slow to regulate, and that's a good thing. It is the people who do not care about our young people, and it's the people who don't care about society that are creating the need to regulate. And so I speak in favor, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Winterstein. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Motion is second. Please vote, and that public hearing is now closed. Cindy?
I would like to ask, I think Commissioner Levent said he would like to come as well, and I would like to ask that Tammy, with the Drug Council, come. She's been working on submitting some stuff as well, and she was coming tonight and hadn't, she failed and wasn't able to, but she's been preparing some stuff to go along with this, and I think she would be a really good asset.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think that's fine. I would ask, Board Members, you don't need to take a motion to assemble the two Commissioners not asking for that, but I would just respectfully request it be postponed to the February meeting.
All right. I will go ahead and offer a motion to send this to an additional public hearing on February the 7th.
Second.
The motion is second. Please vote, and that passes five to zero.
And we have to do each of them separate?
Yeah.
We do, but my presentation will be much shorter for the other two.
All right, Ken, Number 11.
Madam Chair, thank you. Item Number 11 is an ancillary proposed modification to our alcohol code. This is what I referenced. This is, in fact, where the alcohol code would be amended to suggest that if you have a violation of the synthetic cannabinoid or opioid ordinance, as well as the vaping ordinance, that it would count against your alcohol license. Madam Chair, given its dependence on the other two ordinances that are also going to be postponed, my respectful request is we go ahead and have the public hearing, but that this one likewise be postponed to February.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Moved.
Motion is second. Please vote, and we are open with a vote of five to zero. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this?
Madam Chair, I am Kirk Winterstein. Madam Chair, Commissioners, I live in Forsyth County. I speak in favor, based on my prior statement. Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Winterstein. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
We have a motion is second. Please vote, and the public hearing is closed with a vote of five to zero. Discussion? Cindy, any further thoughts on that?
No, I think we're on to something, though.
And Ken, just to kind of talk through the mechanics, you have to first control the sale of it, then this is the piece that ties it to the alcohol license, and it's all, that's how this chain is formed.
The difficulty has been, Board Members, is in defining it. That's always the key, because regulatory codes and quasi-criminal codes have to put people on reasonable notice of what is in fact illegal, and that's been the difficulty here, and I know the Sheriff's Office takes that very seriously, and if we're going to have an ordinance on the books, they want something they can reasonably enforce, and I don't blame them. So that's the trick, and that's why we just need to work together to figure it out.
And with this kind of extending the additional public hearing, what is your mind, in your mind is the probable, let's say it was adopted at the next meeting in February, what would be that time period that people would work through to become compliant? Do you have a reasonable date in mind that all of these things would come together?
That's a good point. You know, right now, the ordinances anticipate that they would become effective upon adoption, but given.
Right.
The significance of this change, and particularly this next one we're about to get into with respect to the vape, the Board may want to build in some lead time to come compliant, because it's going to be a fairly significant wake-up call to some folks, particularly with respect to vape dealers where it's not their primary business, who've never had to be licensed before. They may need some lead time, and candidly, our staff may need some lead time.
Right.
To get comfortable with this, and the Sheriff's Office may need some lead time. So those are great points, and we will certainly discuss those the next meeting.
Thank you.
I will tell you all something that ought to make us feel really good. I had a store owner that came and met with me the other day, and he, I got Tom on the phone. I was looking for Amy, and anyway, he was complaining that he couldn't sell some of the things that they were able to sell in Dawson County and surrounding counties in order to make money, and I said, "Well, tell me, Sam, what are some of the things you can't sell that they can sell that you can't make money on?" And he started to name, and it was like the things that we're happy they can't sell, you know, the hookah pipes and the things with the meth pipes on the bottom of them and the other things. I said, "That makes me so happy. That makes me feel so good that you can't sell those." I mean, I was really glad that, to know that those butane things and the things that they use for the drug paraphernalia that.
Because we've tightened this up in the past.
Yeah. It made me feel really good.
Look at that, Cindy. We don't have to build a wall. We just change some ordinances.
Yeah, it was great. It was a good feeling.
All right. I'd like to offer a motion, then, that we post, that we move this to one more public hearing on February the 7th.
Second.
The motion is second. Please vote, and that passes five to zero. Ken, Number 12.
Madam Chair, Number 12 is sort of the third prong of the trifecta this evening. This is a proposed modifications to the county's alternative nicotine products. You know them as sort of vape or e-cigarettes. We have an ordinance on that and have had an ordinance on that for some time. However, the changes now are significant. Traditionally, what we have regulated are retailers whose primary business was, in fact, vape products. We call them colloquially vape shops. This proposed modification would actually impose a licensing requirement not only on vape shops, those retailers whose primary business is vape products, but also on any retailer selling vape products. And so that's why there is a new permitting scheme in here. There will be an additional regulatory burden on this, because it's additional licensure, additional review, but it would bring all of those who are sort of casually selling these products under the county's regulatory purview as well. The things that stand out with respect to this, number one is the fees. The fees are going to be notably higher. Traditionally, our vape licensure fee has been $50. This proposed fee for a entity whose primary purpose is selling vape products will be $1,000 per year. If it is a vendor whose non-primary business is vape, but nonetheless sells vape products, it would be $750 a year. We also provide in this ordinance, again, as a tether back to our alcohol code, that if you sell vape in a, say, for instance, a package store, which might look like a gas station where you sell packaged beer or wine, which is very customary, that you might see these products at that sort of a store, and you don't have a license to sell the vape products, again, that would not be your primary business. Your primary business is gasoline and alcohol, but if you're selling vape products and do not have a license, that will count as a strike against your alcohol code. So, Madam Chair, once again, I'm requesting that this, too, be postponed until February, but we do need to go ahead and have the public hearing this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Please vote, and that public hearing is open now with a vote of five to zero.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I am Kirk Winterstein. I live in Forsyth County. This is what I believe. I speak only for myself. I speak in favor, based on my prior comments. Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Winterstein. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward to speak in favor? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
The motion is second. Please vote, and the public hearing is now closed. Discussion? Anyone? Any comments from the Board?
I'm just glad to see this is moving forward and we're getting closer.
I just have a quick question.
Yep.
Under Paragraph Prohibitions under Bolex V, is there a difference, Ken? I guess, in other places, it was 100 yards for churches and 200 yards for other type of facilities, that 100-yard difference?
What is the question? The question is why the distinction?
Right, yes, sir.
The distinction is based upon the distinctions that are made typically in the alcohol code. They make the same sort of distinctions of a little additional space for schools as opposed to churches.
And so all of this, we won't have to go back in and make any revisions to this later to bring things in line like we just did with the other two with the false alarms. Everything is across the board consistent between the alcohol and the vaping.
That's correct. Oh, well, no, wait a second. Now, that's a great, they don't have to be, so I'm not going to be able to sit here and tell you that the alcohol setbacks and these setbacks are directly the same. What I'm telling you is, is these setbacks will not have to be harmonized with anything. They can be standalone.
Okay. Right, thank you. Is there any, with respect to basically catching somebody, particularly in the initial transition period, is there a provision for a warning that is not a strike, or is it a first strike is a strike?
I don't believe that, there's no warning language in here. Now, with respect to the setbacks and things, there is grandfathering, and the grandfathering is for April 1st of 2019, so if you already have a vape business in effect that's doing business prior to this being adopted, prior to April 1st, you're going to be fine. But with respect, now, warning is always in the discretion of the regulatory officer as well, so certainly they have the discretion to warn if they think that the situation justifies it, but there's no requirement, unlike, Madam Chair, the false alarm where we just went through, where there's this regimented warning process.
If I may, you'll find the Sheriff typically, if something new comes in, they like to make door knocks, give a little bit of heads up that this is coming.
Which is what, you know, that's what we did with the massage spa ordinance as well, is they spend a lot of time on education before they begin to enforce.
Right. Do we anticipate a notification process proactively to reach out to those folks? I mean, obviously, we're advertising all of our public hearings and those types of things, but if we really want to try to bring people into compliance, are we going to be doing any type of, you know, based on business licenses or those types of things, reaching out, you know, proactively and saying, "If you are selling these products, you have 60 days," or whatever it is, to become compliant with the new regulations?
I think that's something that we could, you know, I know that we could work, obviously the Board can give direction, or the county manager can give direction to code enforcement on that, and that's easy enough to give that sort of a warning, and then I'm sure the Sheriff's Office would be very comfortable working with this as well on that.
And we did that in the past as well. This is what we did. We gave direction.
Well, and it's a sign of the times, too, because to begin with, no convenience stores sold the vaping stuff, and then as it became so popular, and especially with young people, I mean, it, all of a sudden, the convenience stores all started adding it, and it just became, a lot of them started selling it, and that's where it became more and more dangerous.
All right. Well, I'd like to offer a motion, then, if there's no further discussion, that we take this to an additional public hearing on February 7th.
Second.
The motion is second. Please vote, and that passes five to zero. Number 13, it's the Ken Gerard Show.
It is. Madam Chair, thank you very much. Item, or Agenda Item 13 is a proposed modification to Ordinance Number 72, which is the Forsyth County Occupation and Regulatory Fee Ordinance. This is mainly in the nature of housekeeping and cleanup. It has been a while since this ordinance has been shaken out and looked at, and there were just some administrative changes. Mainly, we wanted to capture, if you turn to the second page of the substantive modifications, you might see a new definition of nonprofit, which probably won't be terribly surprising to many of you what a nonprofit means, but then if you continue to turn the page, you will see a Section 2242 on exemptions from the payment of the occupation tax, where we have basically distilled state law on those sorts of entities that do not have to pay our business license or occupation tax. It reads that no occupation tax, regulatory fee, or administrative fee shall be levied on, A, any nonprofit organization, and of course, that's going to reach back to the definition we've now defined, B, any vendor operating under a contract with a tax-exempt agricultural fare, just, that's just a vagary of state law where they've added that in, or any disabled veteran of the armed services or blind persons holding a certificate of exemption, et cetera. We also added some language that although those entities that we just referenced above do not have to pay either the tax or an administrative fee, many times, Madam Chair, Board Members, some of those entities may want to, as just a condition to get their lights turned on, sometimes utilities, another sort of. Sometimes utilities, another sorts of agencies like to see a, an occupation certificate or some sort of an indicia where they have paid this tax. And so we'll allow it, but we're not making it mandatory. So these are the sorts of cleanups we're talking about. Not a whole lot going on here, but we did feel it was time to clean it up a little bit. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move.
Second. You have a motion, second, please vote. If there's, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this change? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Second. You have a motion, second, please vote. And the public hearing is now closed.
Madam Chair, this is ready to be approved this evening if the board is willing.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution that's in our book along with the changes that's presented in our book as well.
Second.
A motion, a second, please, oh, I'm sorry. I keep going.
I got two seconds, I was listening to my seconds here. We have a motion, a second, we have a couple of seconds, please vote. And that does pass five to zero. Moving on to public hearing number 14.
Madam Chair, public hearing number 14 is a proposed modification to Article 2 of Chapter 16 of Unified Development Code. The backup for the next three public hearings is the same. It's just these sections out of the UDC. You ought to see some red line in your book. So this one is on page two, it's the subparagraph two that says, "The Unified Development Code is amended by adding Section 16 hyphen 2.8." I hope you see that and then you'll see a paragraph of red. All we're doing here is we are changing our UDC to make sure that with respect to small cells, that they understand, and there is regulatory support for the notion that if you want to install, at least as it stands right now, that if you want to install small cells in the right of way of Forsyth County, you've got to enter into our master, you've got to enter into our master licensure agreement. This is going to be the best six months of master licensure agreement you've ever seen. Because board members, what I will tell you is, is that the broadband bill perking down at the state capitol, our work is done, the folks that have been working on that bill is finished and it's now beginning to circulate and I have a strong suspicion that will become law and preempt most of this. But we're doing the best we can. Madam Chair, that's my proposal to you. All this says is, is that if you're going to try to put a small cell in the right of way, you got to enter into our master licensure agreement. I hope it's effective for many, many, many years, but I don't know that it will be.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move.
Second. We have a motion, a second, please vote. That public hearing is open with a vote of five to zero. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this initiative, this change? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. And the public hearing is now closed. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion that we approve the changes that are presented in our book under Agenda Public Hearing 14.
Second.
A motion, a second, please vote. And that motion passes five to zero.
And y'all can get in line and get those.
Right.
I will have to say this, you're probably right counsel, that this will be changed this year in the legislature because otherwise AT&amp;T would have been here speaking in opposition. They feel like they have a done deal.
I think that's a very sincere, fair statement. Number 15, Ken.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. Public hearing number 15 is another modification to the Forsyth County Unified Development Code. It is to say it is, housekeeping doesn't quite capture it. If you look at the same page where you were just looking at 16 2.8, you look right above that, you may see a reference to 8 4.4A3. Board of Commissioners' approval to amend text of this code shall be in the form of a resolution or motion, as this board is aware of. Many times, you take action to modify the code by way of a motion, not a resolution. I will tell you, the law treats a resolution as synonymous with a motion, but we're going to go ahead and clean it up anyway. Madam Chair, that's my presentation and you can approve this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move.
Second. You have a motion, a second, please vote. Public hearing is open with a vote of five to zero. Anyone who would like to speak in favor, please come forward. Anybody who would like to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
A motion, a second, please vote. And that public hearing is closed with a vote of five to zero. What's the pleasure of the board?
You want to roll?
Oh, boy, thank you. I make a motion to approve agenda item, public hearing number 15 as presented in our books.
Second.
A motion, a second, please vote. And that motion passes with a vote of five to zero. We have one more. Public hearing number 16, Ken.
Madam Chair, thank you. Public hearing item number 16, we're still on that same page of the UDC. Now we're at the bottom. This is Section 18 5.24. And again, board members, all of these UDC modifications have already had a first public hearing in front of the planning commission, so that's why they're all ready for you to take action on. This pertains to actually an issue that we have had come up in the county recently with respect to the conveyance of amenity areas, et cetera. This language requiring these amenity packages and common area packages, common areas generally to be deeded back to the property owners has been in our code for some time, but as Mr. Biden and I began to look at it, the thought was some timing would be nice, not just that there's a requirement that it be turned over, but there's a requirement of the when. And so this provides the when, and W-H-E-N, the when it would be turned over. And that is upon the earlier of when management of the subdivision is transitioned from the developer to a property owners association or like entity, I think that makes sense, or at the time of final buildout of all residential units. This is important as well. This language shall not place an affirmative obligation on the county to monitor the transfer of title of common areas, drainage easements and amenity areas, but shall authorize county action and enforcement in the event of reported failures of compliance. I heartily agree with that language. We don't want to be the turnover your property police, but if there is a situation that is presented to us, we want to be able to take the appropriate action. Madam Chair, it is my recommendation that this be approved if that is the pleasure of the board.
I move.
After, excuse me, after the final public hearing.
Right, and just for clarification, that's when the, either of those, the first occurs, the transition or the final buildout, whichever occurs first?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move.
We have a motion, a second, please vote. Public hearing is open, the vote of five to zero. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this?
My name's Robert Hoyt. I live at 2621 Grapevine Circle. I'm in support of this and I think this is very important because we've run into some situations where there's an orphan drainage pond over, over by Haber Sham Gates and that area that nobody could ever figure out what to do and the person who should have done this is long gone. These builders often, you know, they'll build in what they call sometimes collapsible corporations. They build a development, they finish it, they close it. And so in order to have this before there's, you know, the final buildout, it's important that it be done then so that the neighbors don't end up with nobody to look, look after it. So I think this is very important to clarify this.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyt. Thank you, Mr. Hoyt. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Madam Chair Commissioners, I'm Joshua Scoggins with Miles Hensford and Talent. I'm here tonight on behalf of Danny Bennett and Danny Reed. I've been asked to speak about this proposed UDC change, particularly as it pertains to the conveyance of amenity packages. It's no secret, as you all know, that my clients develop and are developing multiple projects in Forsyth County and have done that for many years. They are currently involved, as you all know, in litigation concerning the ownership of the amenity area in the Woodland Park neighborhood on Brandon Road. My clients have expressed to me that they're concerned with three things. First is that this UDC change has been proposed specifically to target them and single them out because of this lawsuit. As Mr. Gerard indicated earlier, the conveyance requirement in the ordinance has been there for some time, but it wasn't until this litigation started that they, all of a sudden, the board got interested in making this UDC change. Second, they're concerned that if this change is adopted by the county, that the county may attempt to retroactively apply it to this particular situation and interfere with or, in other words, short circuit or try to influence the outcome of this ongoing litigation. Finally, as a corollary to number two, Mr. Bennett and Mr. Reed are concerned about the types of enforcement actions the county may try to take against them in an effort, again, to use the heavy hand of the government and the deep pockets of the government to coerce them into taking action with respect to this dispute. While I understand the justification behind it, the UDC changes, my clients feel as though the government should not go out of its way to target specific individuals just because they're in a bona fide dispute with a bunch of private voters and those people are upset and want you to target those individuals. I just don't think that's appropriate. My clients don't think it's appropriate and I would ask you to reject these changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scoggins. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Second.
You have a motion, a second, please vote. That public hearing is now closed with a vote of five to zero.
I have a couple of questions.
I think everybody's can probably have a couple of questions. Ken, I just want to verify with you that sometimes, and there are situations that occur that make us realize that we have places that we can improve in our code and it should not be construed as a personal attack against any one party. Would you agree with that?
Madam Chair, I would and sometimes it's the very recognition and focusing on those codes that demonstrates there may be opportunities to make them better. And so that may in fact be the catalyst for these sorts of modifications. So I concur.
Thank you. And the other comment that I wanted to make and have a dialogue with you publicly is that I don't see this as something that, I don't think that we can retroactively intervene in these situations when it's not been a condition of when something's been, so I think the idea that there's some retroactive possibility of us, of us using this against an existing bona fide litigation case, I think is a null issue, is it not?
The parties to that case are aware of the ordinance as it exists now. And the ordinance as it exists now provides that that amenity package, common areas, et cetera, shall be conveyed. This simply adds some timing elements to it and I have received no feedback from anybody suggesting that there is an interest in applying new language to a past situation.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Anyone else have comments or questions?
Have several, just to clarify some of the comments I just heard. So the first public hearing was in November 13th. Unless somebody can tell me differently, I did not see counsel for this developer come up and speak about this at all at that time. Am I correct or am I wrong?
Well, that would have been, that would have been in front of the planning commission and I don't know the answer to that question of whether Mr. Scoggins spoke with the planning commission, I just don't know.
If you don't mind, Mr. Scoggins, I'd like to know.
I was not asked to speak at that hearing.
So I do remember us dealing with an orphan pond or two in the past. And if I remember correctly, those go back a year and a half, two years or more. Why now, if we had those issues back then and deal with those then, why now are we looking at this and not then? Who brought this forward now?
As far as who brought this, this UDC change?
Yeah, who asked to move this ball forward?
I would have to look at the work session agenda item to see who brought it forward.
And the red...
It was probably me because it was in my district.
It may have been. I could find that very quickly.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was.
Right, which would help me because that has nothing to do with what we just heard. It's because you're talking about a different orphan pond you're interested in.
Exactly.
And you haven't been on the board that terribly long to be, have done it way back then.
Correct.
Okay, fair enough. And then the retroback piece, Ken, if this gets voted on and passes this evening, are they subject to any retroback compliance?
Well, that's a little bit of a complicated question only because the law does allow for the retroactive applications of some laws, but the, the opinion on that's a little bit complicated. So I will say this, I'll go back to what I said to Chairman Simonsen. Nobody has intimated to me at all that there is an interest in attempting to adopt this language and an attempt to insert ourselves in a prior civil dispute with respect to this new language. And that's exactly what I believe to be the case, that there's no interest in doing that.
As long as that's true, I feel good about this.
Let me just say, the reason we brought this up was not looking at any current, but anytime we identify weakness in our code of things that, and I think consensus was among our discussion was that this needed fixed going forward and not with any, like Ken, counsel said, not any indication of any current litigation that's going on, but simply going, moving forward to make our code better.
Thank you. My line of question was exactly that to hear hopefully what I just heard.
But I'm hopeful that they'll do the right thing.
Is there any further discussion or would someone like to offer a motion?
I'll move. We approve the revisions to Section 18 524 as briefed to the UDC.
Second.
A motion, a second, please vote. And that motion does pass five to zero. And I think that does it for public hearings. At this time, Karen will read the rules of the meeting and we'll announce the public comment speakers if there are any.
Madam Chairman, running out the second public comment portion of tonight's meeting. I have no speakers currently registered. If someone would like to address the board at this time, please come forward.
I'm not seeing any, so we'll move on to old business, which we have none in, straight on into new business. Item number one.
Madam Chair, thank you. Item number one is a annexation and I know the board is aware that we usually handle annexation requests, obviously by the city of coming at work session. However, there are some time practicalities that are dictating we at least have a first shot at this tonight. I will tell you that based upon our deadlines, we can postpone this to the work session and that's fine with respect to giving my office the final direction on what to do with it. We will need to get our letter into overnight mail that night of January 8th if we're going to do that. So that's perfectly fine. So let me walk you through this, there should be something on your screen here. So this is a proposed annexation of property located west of Triple Gap Road, south of Sonny Drive and east of State Route 20. It is my understanding that this property is sought to be annexed, which means bringing the property within the municipal boundary of the city of coming related to their proposed city center. This is the first time that the city of coming, at least since I have been your county attorney, has used the 60% method as opposed to the 100% method. The 60% method states that annexations is submitted where it requires you to secure the approval of 60% of the, let me see, let me see, okay, here we go. Requires a written and signed application of not less than 60% of the electors or voters in the area and the owners of not less than 60% of the land area. So it allows basically the taking, if those two key components can be satisfied, it allows the annexation when you don't have 100% unanimity. So it is a lesser, that's why it requires two elements as opposed to one, which is the 100% method. So let me explain what they're doing because I think I do understand what is going on here. All right, first of all, the shaded in yellow, that is the municipal boundary of the city of coming. All right, and do you see, I hope you do, some, some areas that are sort of hash marked in red and outlined in blue? Let me go ahead and sort of cut to the chase on this. What the city of coming is looking to annex is the parcel, the big parcel, it almost looks like the blade of an axe. Does everybody see that, the larger one? That's what the city of coming is truly interested in annexing. Again, I'm not trying to speak for the city, but that's the way I perceive this application. But to get there, if they just tried to annex the blade of the axe, the big parcel, you can see that to the right of that, they would leave, all of that area would be unincorporated Forsyth County. That's called an unincorporated island and you can't do that. A city can't annex all the way... A city can't annex all the way around a bunch of county property and then leave one little node of county property right in the middle of that. Can you, can you imagine the problem delivering services to that one little isolated node of county property? So they have to sort of get there, and they get there by crossing over that red hash-marked, blue, developed land to get to the big piece that looks like a blade. That's what they're attempting to get to. And so let me just see here how many PowerPoint slides I have to click through to get to my next one. So the proposed annexation will result in the annexation of the road highlighted in red, because as the board is aware, whenever a municipal government annexes on both sides of a road, they own the road. And so that would happen here as well. So they would, in fact, pick up that right-of-way, which is candidly a maintenance obligation. So we typically don't have a lot of problems with that unless it begins to divide up our right-of-way to the point it makes maintenance a real problem. Engineering records indicate that the city already maintains the portion of Triple Gap Road that I have circled with the green, so that shouldn't be a concern to the Board of Commissioners. This is the proposed city center. Now, this is based upon what was published in the newspaper, but this is their proposed city center. If you look to the top, where you see sort of the red buildings toward the top that look to be fairly dense, that is the blade that I just referenced. Okay? That's the piece they're attempting to get to. So if you look immediately to the right of that, you see nothing but white. That's the area they're having to annex to get to the blade parcel. All right? So this is maybe a better way of looking at it. The proposed city center is there in the red outline. The yellow is the blade, the yellow with all the forest in it, that's the blade. And then the yellow that goes right all the way to Triple Gap, that's the annexation they have to do to get there. I do think it's worth noting, because this is a nice aerial, that the area that is carved up into small land lots that they have to annex to get to the blade parcel, that's already developed. There are already structures on that piece of property, and people are living there. The blade parcel is zoned as a PUD for Forsyth County. It's presently zoned PUD. The PUD concept plan for which that property was owned by the county looks like the area in red. I hope you all are seeing that. So if you go to our zoning file right now and try to take a look at what the concept plan was for that PUD, that's what it would look like. And the reason I want to bring that to your attention is because I want to go back to the city's proposal. So this is the town center for the city, and that's what that area looks like. And then I want to go back to the PUD that we zoned it to. I hope you see at least maybe a rudimentary, not perfect, but at least a rudimentary similarity there. Not, not completely, but something. Anyway, okay, that's, the slide did it better than I, I could explain it. All right, because, however, this is unusual for us, because this involved all of those little lots to get there, I had to show you not only the big blade. The big blade area is the area in yellow on this slide. So I, this is, you know, you've seen this before in work session. This is how I typically show it. I'll show you the tax parcel. What's on the tax parcel, which is right now, the blade is undeveloped. It's currently zoned PUD under our zoning, and their proposed zoning is OCMS R3. Now, all of those other lots that they have to, they have to annex to get there, they are currently zoned by us. R1, you see down about three-quarters down, you'll see C13025. You'll see our zoning is RES6 on that one parcel. But most of the parcel on ours is R1. The city is proposing to change it to either their city code of R2 or R3. Curious a little bit, simply because those lots already have structures on them. They're already lived in. So I'm not sure why there is that change of zoning on those parcels, and candidly, they're not part of the city center anyway. But I have to bring that out to you. Impact. The county's comprehensive plan notes that the property is located, the property to be annexed, board members, is located within the campground character area, but it is not within a specific node. Since these parcels are not in the county water and sewer service area, we really don't have an infrastructure objection that we could make. The character area, this is important, would not consider R2, R3, or OCMS. Those are the city's proposed zoning designation for the blade parcel as an appropriate zoning classification. Okay? I think that's important. So we wouldn't consider that appropriate now, but the previously approved PUD already allows the use that the city appears to be looking to make of the blade parcel anyway. So I want you to hear me on that. The PUD already seems to suggest we could, they could do it. The board knows all too well the standards for objection, and I'll just go over them very quickly. With the Board of Commissioners, which is to make an objection to a proposed annexation, and specifically to the proposed use of property that is intended to be annexed. These are the criteria, A and B. If, if the proposed annexation and the use of property would create a substantial change in the intensity of the allowable use, or a use which significantly increases the net cost of infrastructure, or significantly diminishes the value or useful life of a capital outlay project, or it defers substantially from the existing uses suggested for the property by the county's comprehensive land use plan. From my perspective, board members, the blade piece of property, I'm going to go back just to orient you on that very quickly. How about maybe that one? The blade piece of property in yellow, as I mentioned, is zoned currently PUD, and it looks like the proposed use by the city is roughly equivalent, not exactly, but roughly. But the getting there is curious. I would typically raise that as a larger red flag. The only reason I'm not raising it as a huge red flag is because people are living there. I mean, there are, the structures are occupied, so I'm not sure what would be the plan. And again, board members, I truly think that the annexation of that area of lived-in units is utilitarian only. I think it's simply the way they have to get there to not create an unincorporated island. Madam Chair, that's my presentation. I know there may be some interest in allowing the district commissioner to have some more thought on this, which I think makes a lot of sense. The board does not have to take action one way or the other this evening. You do need to take action on the 8th and give me some direction on a time-sensitive basis that day.
Thank you. Ken, I have just, I guess, one or two questions that kind of came to mind. Has, has there been, that is baffling to see all those different changes to those, those zoning designations almost. Has there been any analysis, I guess, of whether or not the existing zonings they have from us are somewhat reflective of a similar type of outcome with their current? Because as we know, even our categories over the years fluctuate in what the requirements are. And so I don't know that their R3 versus our old R1 or R2 at the time isn't, I don't, I don't know what their, how they applied all that, and if there was an attempt to try to back into their code for what people are actually developed on.
It's a good, it's a fair question, and I don't know if they may have some future brownfield development in mind as those structures get older. You know, you never, you never know what the 20-year build-out may be.
Right.
But planning did indicate to us that the city's R2 or R3 is more intense than we would, than we would zone those parcels.
Thank you. And the other question I have, typically, we're looking at 100%. So what is the color, you know, do we have some color on that as to where the, where that 40% lies within there that is not, or if it's maybe less than 40%? Where, where the, the, the people that are going to be subjected to this that are not in favor of it, where they reside within the greater scheme of things and what their issues may have been?
If I could add a couple of comments. I toured the, the area with the mayor several weeks ago, and the challenge I think they faced there, this is an area that, where the residences are largely rental properties.
And they can't come to you anymore.
Their challenge in trying to get, meet the, the two-tail test is there are registered voters that haven't lived there for years. They apparently haven't registered anyplace else, so that would have triggered them being taken off our voter roll, but they haven't. There's at least one individual who still registered the vote that is deceased. And so I think their challenge out there is just the nature, it's a relatively low-income area, the nature of, of the development, and the residents out there, I think, presented a challenge. And as Ken indicated, it's, it's the challenge of creating an island of unincorporated surrounded by city that, that leads them to take that on. And I would just say, the mayor did not suggest any future plans, but, but certainly, as Ken indicated, because of the condition of some of the, the houses there, there may be something in mind in terms of making improvements within that area.
So the up to 40% is more indicative of people that they could not reach?
I think, I think that's a particular challenge.
Rather than an objection.
And I know they were hoping to work on the voter rolls, but that was a sensitive issue at the time this came up because of that being a statewide issue. So I think they've tried to find the tool that would get them to the finish line.
Thank you. What's, what's the pleasure? Molly's?
I mean, I have a couple, I have a couple of comments and questions. I know it's her district. Staff has started looking at some of these older homes that are worn down and possibly making them, bring them up to a better level, I guess, if you will, of living quarters for the folks that live in them. If this becomes city, we don't have that option to look at these anymore. These, if I looked at this, a lot of those were trailers, am I right? Or some of them were? I will follow the lead of that district commissioner.
But we don't, we don't know that they're not trying to do revitalization.
We don't know either that they are or are not.
Right. I mean.
But we know we are.
I have heard that they're trying to do Main Street USA grants and different things, trying to revitalize.
Let, let me offer up just one thing that may make you at least kind of put this into context, and I'm talking mainly about the small lots, not the blade, big piece of property, but the small lots. Even if the city had proposed it at the most equivalent city zoning that matches what is on there now, even if they went back and changed what they're proposing right now, after a year, y'all know the magic year after the annex.
They can do whatever they want.
It really doesn't matter. And because there's people living there right now, you can know that probably nothing different is going to occur on there for a while. I can't say how long, but I've got to believe nothing's happening on that property for 12 months, different than once. Anyway, I just wanted to offer that context.
Molly?
Yes, I move that our consideration for the annexation of this property located west of Triple Gap Road, south of Sonny Drive, and east of State Route 20 be postponed, and that it goes to the work session in January the 8th for consideration and vote.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please vote. And our decision is moved until our next work session next Tuesday.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you. Item number two, Eric Johnson.
Commissioners, this would be your consideration of appointments and reappointments to the zoning board of appeals. A is District One representative. And that would be Mark Weiss as the District One board member on the zoning board of appeals.
Do you, do you have anything you'd like to read on that? Do you have any, a bio?
I don't have anything prepared, but I can tell you that I was very pleased to have Mark to consent to consider being on board if it is approved tonight, and he'll certainly be an asset.
Can we meet him?
Sure, he's here.
Wave at him. Stand up. What's the pleasure of the board? Would you like to make a motion?
I'd move to, for the board to appoint Mark Weiss as the appeals board District One representative.
Second. Got a lot of seconds there. We have a motion in several seconds, please vote. And that passes five to zero. Welcome aboard the crazy train. Number two.
The next item would be the appointment or reappointment of District Three member to the zoning board of appeals. It's a four-year appointment that begins this week, and the recommended action is to reappoint Edward Crowell as the District Three member.
I move.
Second. Motion and second, please vote. And that also passes five to zero. And that's a, that's a reappointment, correct?
Yes.
Thank you for prior service and welcome aboard again.
Don't tell them we did it tonight because I didn't.
You didn't tell them? Yeah. Number, number three, please.
Commissioner, number three would be appointments or reappointments to the Forsyth County Parks and Recreation Board. The first one is a District One appointment. It would be appointment of Matt McClure.
Six months or a year.
Again, this is another asset to our county. Matt McClure has had family involved in the park and rec department playing sports, as well as been very involved in our community and served on various boards. I move that we appoint Matt McClure to the Parks and Rec Board for District One.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion passes five to zero. Welcome aboard. Eric?
Commissioners, B is to reappoint Gary Cooper as the District Four Parks and Recreation Board member.
Cindy?
I move.
Well, there we go. That was quick. Please vote. And Gary Cooper joins us again for another term on Parks and Rec.
He does a good job.
Commissioner, C would be reappoint Bibianna Lopez as the District Five Parks and Recreation Board member.
Thank you. Bibi's done a great job on the Parks and Rec Board, and so I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Bibi Lopez to the Parks and Rec Board.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that also passes five to zero.
Commissioners, number four is board consideration approval of appointments or reappointments to the Forsyth County Animal Control Board. The first one is the veterinarian representative, and the recommended action is to reappoint Dr. John McGruder. DVM is the veterinarian member of the Animal Control Board.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And Dr. McGruder is reappointed as the veterinarian on the Animal Control Board. We thank him for his longstanding service in that role.
Commissioners, item B is the adult resident, and the recommendation is to reappoint Vicki Renick as the adult resident member.
I move. We have a motion and a second, please vote. And again, that motion passes five to zero, and we thank Vicki for continuing on with Number five.
Five is board consideration approval of appointments or reappointments of the commission district citizen stakeholders. The first is District One, and the recommendation is to appoint Shane Hazel and Margie Carroll as District One's citizen stakeholders.
Again, these are two people that have been very active in our community, probably a lot of you people know them, and I move to appoint Shane Hazel and Margie Carroll as District One citizen stakeholders.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion passes five to zero. Welcome aboard to both Shane and Margie and District Three.
In District Three, the recommendation is to reappoint Edwards Cersei and Jessica Thorson as the citizen stakeholders.
I move.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion passes five to zero. Thank you for continuing on with us. We have, we have a few more.
Number, number six is board consideration approval of appointments or reappointments to the Forsyth County Planning Commission. First one is District One representative, and this would be appointment of Carrie Hill as the recommended District One planning commissioner.
I move to appoint Carrie Hill as the District One planning commissioner. She's a great asset to the community and has been very involved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes five to zero. Welcome aboard Carrie.
Can we meet her?
Wave, wave, wave to the crowd. There you go. Wave to all of the people here. And District Three, please.
The next one is to reappoint Keith Banky as the District Three planning commissioner.
So I move.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes, and Mr. Banky will continue with us. Moving on to number seven.
Number seven is board consideration approval of appointments or reappointments to the Forsyth County Public Facilities Authority. The first is a District Three representative, and the recommendation is to reappoint Edward Crowell as the District Three member.
So I move.
Motion and second, please vote. Motion passes five to zero.
And the next one is the one we added earlier tonight, which is the District One representative, and it's to appoint Ken Schugert as the District One member.
Commissioner Cooper?
Move that we appoint Ken Schugert as a public facility authority for District One.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, please vote. All right. Counselor, is there, we've come to the end of our regular business. Is there a need for executive session?
Madam Chair, there was going to be, but I think I have used my time this evening.
Madam Chair, there was going to be, but I think I have used my time this evening, so I will do this on Tuesday.
I believe the board concurs.
Before you adjourn, I should have asked, I had the announcement. I just want to ask everybody to remember Bettina Hammond's husband. She called me today, and her husband's really, really sick. And if y'all will remember, he has found out he's got cancer in a really bad way. If y'all will remember Bettina and Alan.
Thank you. Is there, is there a motion to adjourn?
So I move.
Second. We have a motion and a second, please vote. And we are adjourned with a vote of five to zero at 6:51 PM.
Awesome.